6:30, I'm going to call the meeting to order. Um, uh, let's see. I'm looking at the wrong thing. Um, there's no suggested disclaimer, that's what I'm waiting to do. Um, alright, so we'll do a quick roll call of members. We have Carl, John, Bill, myself, Rebecca, Mike Ahern, we have Mark, and, gosh, we have Zach down there. Um, for those of you new to the board, I, for some reason, blank out on names when I call, do a roll call, so. Um, and we have our two alternates, Mike Bouchard and Susan here as well, who are welcome to be a part of the conversation, but we, since we have a full, uh, full board tonight, um, I'll ask you to not, or please don't vote. Um, alright, so, let's review the minutes from our meeting on the 17th. We have one, two, three. You were here, Mark, so we, I'm just making sure we have enough people to, uh, Carl, Mark, Mike, four of us, so, um, that's sufficient. Any comments or corrections for the minutes? I just had one in the, um, under number five, the motion, it's just a typo, it says, "Motion to accept" instead of "accept." I think we all know what it means, but, can you correct that? Any other edits for the minutes? Does anyone like to make a motion to accept the minutes?
I move we accept. The minutes.
Just want to make sure you spelled that with an A and not an E-X. Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any abstaining?
Abstain.
And any, um... Gosh, nays. Opposed, thank you. Any opposed, I don't think there was any opposed, so, minutes are approved. Okay, moving on to acknowledgement of communications received.
It's pretty quiet. It's good, except for all my emails.
Yeah. Um... Alright, so no new applications, we do have a continued public hearing for a site plan review, um, to construct four buildings for self-storage unit business on the westerly portion of the property, and to establish a moving truck rental business on the easterly portion of the property associated with the existing building. Um, this is PID number 104-018. Um... Alright, so for this, I think we've gotten the most recent plans here that showed up, um, earlier this week, um, and then a response to the, um, comments from the town engineer, and just looking at the planner report, it does, or the staff report, it does look like all the engineering comments have been addressed. Any other questions? Um, want to go through in detail and look at the plan again, sort of? Share my screen if that works. Sure. If you have questions about where they, where they made changes?
Yeah, let's pop that up, um, it's also... Again, this scale is a little hard to see, but the, the, so, yeah, we had, um, since the last meeting, we had, um, Mike Vignali, our town engineer's, comments on it, and, um, want to thank the applicant and his engineers for, uh, getting a revised plan in a timely manner, so, um, it came, I don't know, late June or something, and then we got that to Mike Vignali to review, and he felt that everything in, from the engineering details, where, had been addressed around drainage, and some, some pretty good comments, I think, about gutters and just some, they made some, some changes to the detention pond kind of area over here, and, um, let me see if I can get this sheet, it's a little more clear, sort of in this area, and then, um, over in this area, some added details around, um, on, let's see, is it? Before the berm issue was addressed on, around the, uh, existing parking lot area, so, basically it was trying to, um, have better standards, um, in refining where the water's going to go from draining, draining off both the existing parking lot and then the new proposed, uh, buildings there, so it's going to be gathered through a stormwater drainage system and put into a detention pond, and a sort of simplified view of it. In addition, they added, um, some other details to kind of take care of some other things. One thing that Mike Vignali did mention in his letter, which I had emailed to you, was that there was not lighting on it, but he'd missed it, it is on there. It's, it's hard to see at this scale, but there are little, um, I'm going to blow it up, there are, whoops, sorry, there are some little triangles on the corners and around the edges of the, the actual buildings here that are, uh, are lights, and so since then, so basically they, they addressed all of the, um, sort of civil engineering drainage issues, and then I took another look at it and had, in my staff report, some, some comments, since I don't have my report in front of me, because that's okay. And they also went back, because I can look at it here, that they, uh, also added to this plan a note about the lighting being downcast, I think that's up here, note number 13 is here, that that's, uh, downcast lighting, um, the parking, you know, that, again, they are not planning on striping the parking lot, this existing parking lot here with these, these spaces, it was just merely to show the number of spaces there, and there's some added designated parking here and around the backside of the building where we had walked around. Um, I had noted that they, you know, we talked about adding a hedge, and so that's an evergreen hedge is here. Fencing, a gate, there's a note specifying that this, it's a chain link, six-foot chain link fence right along here, I know you really can't read it there, but at least you can see it in the copy in front of you. And then the other two things really are about the sign and the site access, because it, we discovered that the existing sign here is actually not on the property. So the original application, um, back in May when we got it, had some, some sketches of adding to that sign, so I just think that there needs to be recognition that really, you know, this, this plan has made us aware that it's not on the property, it's kind of a unique site because of the way it drops down, but, um, you know, it's really up for the applicant to work out, I guess, with the select board, to turn, determine if they want to keep that sign in the right-of-way, or any changes that may want to happen to it, you know, it is there, it's been functioning, obviously, we're all kind of familiar with it, I think it's really up to them to work out with, um, with the select board if it's going to stay there. If it moves onto the property, you know, because of the grade change, it might need to be looked at for the height of a freestanding sign, so you can actually see it from the road, it might be a case for variance. The other concern I have is if there's, now we have two lots, there's, you know, this is, this line here represents the subdivision, so if we have one sign here advertising the business on the other lot, then it's a billboard, it's a, it's advertising us a, um, business that's not on the, on the premises, so that needs to go through this. What I'm understanding, I guess, was an amendment to the zoning ordinance a number of years ago about a mass sign master plan, but it's kind of vague what that is really supposed to entail, but we'll try to figure that out if we get to that point. So it might need to come back to kind of look at that, but, um... So they added a note about the sign, and then also the site access, that because of this kind of unique situation where, while there is a right-of-way to the back lot here, which by chance, in this case, the town actually owns, but, you know, it's giving access across from this lot onto the other lot, this lot, as we've discussed before, you know, improving the subdivision, does have frontage on Highland Street, but the access is going to come off of a unapproved, you know, a road that's not built to standard, it's kind of like a Class 6 road in a way, so by law, they have to get, um, the select board to issue the building permit after the building inspector reviews it. So I think they've basically addressed all of those items that I had listed, oh, and then timeline, there is a note somewhere, I think it's hoping to start in, in August, they added on one of the other sheets, just to kind of get a sense of, you know, how, how fast, I know from conversations, it was, um, the applicant wanted to move fairly quickly, but, if we get all this in place, so. That's kind of a summary of the changes, and, um, so, again, I would thank them very much for, well, the, after they got my staff report, they, you know, they just sent this, I think, late on Tuesday, so I sent it to you yesterday, I know there wasn't a lot of time to review, but, um, I'm confident that they addressed everything, from Mike Vignali's concerns and the last details that I had raised. I don't know if Eric wants to add anything.
I was going to see if the board had any questions for you first, any questions for June? Anything to add, Eric?
No, we'll deal with the sign after.
Okay.
I'm not even sure what the right answer is, so, um, I'll meet with June and we'll sit down in select court, I guess.
Yeah, the sign is kind of a strange situation, it's not, it's kind of unique, go ahead, Mike.
What is the width of the road right there?
Over 50 feet, I don't know the exact...
Because that looks like 100, we would, kind of like what it's showing, I don't have a scale.
Scale it off of the, there, I didn't bring a scale with me, but...
Because that sign could be on your property, I don't know where the property markers are, I mean, I'm...
Well, the survey...
There was a question, I guess, the surveyor indicated that the propping line ended on the outside of the road, it could have, the propping line could actually be in the middle of the road, I, I really don't have a definitive answer, that's what I'm saying, like, it's probably easier just to push this issue aside, and knowing it needs further investigation and some new solution, but I don't, like, I, I don't have an argument to make that, that says, "Hey, we should approve it," because...
Yeah, I'm just saying, I'm throwing it out there that, uh, the width of Route 3 differs depending on the property on the sides, it's narrow and extra-wide in other areas, so, might be something to check out.
Well, Mike, so the, I'm sorry, the, I mean, we just had this survey, you know, Kevin French just stamped this, and so designating that that's, I mean, so, for the subdivision, so if we look up here, I mean, that, this heavy line is what he's certifying, whoops, my cursor's going, this, you know, this heavier line along here is the surveyed, freshly surveyed plan, so...
Alright, so sign to be dealt with, and if it needs a master sign plan, then we'll see you for a site plan review for the master sign, if that's, if that's how it ends up, but it sounds like there's some...
June, would it, would it make sense that this would fall under 408-8 non-conforming signs, as it's not currently on the property?
Um, yeah, I think that there's, you know, who knows how long it's been there, and it, you know, it probably was there before, could have been, I'm not, and not knowing the full history of the site, not having researched that, chances are, the sign was just put there because it was convenient, it was up by the roads, you can see the way in, so I don't think anybody's had any issues with it, it certainly doesn't seem to be obstructing visual, you know, that kind of thing, so I think, um, it would be, um, you know, the town isn't asking to have it removed.
Right.
I mean, at some point, I guess...
Although they could.
They could, you know, unless there was some easement or lease or something, or, you know, some, some kind of, something we can, I'm sure something can be worked out, given the uniqueness of the property, given the history, it's not like the sign was just put up two years ago or something, so...
Right. Okay. I just, I wanted to recognize that there, we do address non-conforming signs in our, in our ordinance, and, in the zoning ordinance, and, you know, as long as it's not enlarged, altered, relocated, and it's kept, the advertising is kept current within six months, I mean, technically it can stay there as long as the, as long as the message is updated to the current product that it's advertising, right?
Again, that, that nonconformity really apply, applies if it's on the property. So that, you know, that, it's really up to the select board, because it's like, we don't, we can't, I guess my point is, the planning board can't approve a sign on property that is the town's, without the select board...
True, but we're not being asked to approve it either, it's there.
Well, there was going to be changes to the sign in the original application, so that's what I'm saying, that we shouldn't, any changes to it should go to the select board, not for this board, that's really the detail of that.
Unless they, I mean, if they wanted to propose to bring it onto the site, we could approve that.
Correct, then it would look at it something differently, yeah.
Sounds like there's likely a resolution for this, but it's just not going to happen this evening, so...
It's not really in the board's purview to make, give, give any changes to a sign that's not on the site.
And June, you said you're going to work with him to figure out a recommendation that you'll bring to the select board, or that you'll bring to the select board...
Yeah, I think, I think the best plan is to, you know, we can have a conversation after the meeting, you know, in the next few days, and come up with a, whatever you want to do with the sign, and, you know, bring it to the board, and, and you can discuss it and think through what you want to do with it, and maybe need some kind of statement or, you know, resolute, you know, I don't know, agreement to allow it to be there, or, or what, how, what the parameters are for changing it, since, you know, again, nobody would have probably known that until this proposal came about, just because it was surveyed, so...
Based on the date, um, I will have the site work done, 80% of the gravel, because I want some gravel to settle over the winter time, and the cement foundation put in this year, Treykey, who does the prefab self-storage units, won't be able to deliver until January, which doesn't work up here, so, it'll be April, so we have a pretty large window to figure out the sign.
So I make a motion that we...
To continue the public...
We got to open the public hearing.
Oh.
Yeah. So, hold on, but soon enough. Any other questions from the board before I open up a public hearing, the public hearing? It is 6:47. Does anyone wish to speak of any nature about this application? June, do we have folks joining us from, from home as well that might?
There is nobody zooming in besides me.
Alright. Great. 6:47 and a half. Closing the public hearing. Any other discussion from the board, or?
Perhaps the motion that Mike could consider.
Yeah, so I make a motion that we approve the site plan, appreciate all the time that the applicant has devoted to answer our questions, and, um, any, are there any conditions that we need to?
That's probably, yeah, we prob, yeah. Um, there's a list of them, um, we should probably discuss those.
Do we have them?
Yeah, on the staff, in the staff report.
And the recommendations, the second page of the staff report?
Yep.
You may not have that printed, sorry.
Okay.
I can bring it, I can share my screen again.
I have an extra copy.
This is, everyone's throwing copies everywhere. I think, I think we've got enough at this point right now.
I will share my screen too, and make it...
I think I had it opened to the page, you did, and I'm looking, I'm on my, forgot my glasses, but...
So my...
Is it all those little bullets?
Yeah. Well, so this is similar, what we've been doing for similar, um, I mean, actually, that, you know, the scale of this plan is such that it's a little deceiving, I mean, it's a lot bigger of an area to be developed than, say, the Aroma Joes site, so, um, like we did for that, so my bullets here were basically about the landscaping and the fence, which they took care of, we've got two full-size copies, we're going to discuss the sign, they put a note about the, um, building, the select board having to approve the building permit because of the road issues, they've got that, so then really, starting, starting with this, this area here, but the, executing a development agreement, and I'm trying to think that it, it's good to have this within a certain timeline, so, especially since they're stating they want to get going on it, kind of, it kind of helps us to know that things, you know, that could be negotiated certainly, or we could say within three months, or whatever. And then, uh, establishing an escrow account with the town for periodic construction inspection by the town's engineer, and we'll figure out that amount, I think for Aroma Joes, it's been $1,400, this was the estimated amount, it might not be that much. Again, Mike Vignali's plan review has been less than, um, what he had estimated, but we, we quickly return the money when we've got the final bill for those different steps. Um, so that, yeah, period, construction inspection, and then also, again, because of the, kind of the drop-off, the wet area, I'm suggesting having some kind of a bond or a letter of credit, again, just for the site restoration, um, that, that kind of thing, so, I'm trying to remember what it was for Aroma Joes, I'm kind of basing it on the amount of area, we'd have to look at that, um, and again, that's really in case something unfortunate happened, and we had to, you know, the site was left kind of in an unmaintained state with half dug up, or whatever, we would then be able to call that surety and, and, uh, secure the site, loam and seed it, so it's not, um, causing any runoff or erosion or anything like that. Getting as-built plans within 30 days of completion, and then conditional approval, I, again, the dates, we can talk to the applicant about, for what, what they want there. So these have been some conditions that we've been having for the last, for like Riverside Landing, Aroma Joes, these kind of steps that we've been working on.
So it sounds like it's the fourth bullet down, all the way down through?
Um, yes. Starting with the fourth one?
Starting the one...
Yes.
Okay, so I'm, I'm fine with that?
Without the development agreement from there on down?
Yes.
Okay. I should have numbered them, maybe.
We're good.
I can number them, I can change it.
Okay, so your motion is to approve this application with the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 conditions that June just read off?
Yes.
And that are highlighted on the screen?
Yes.
Alright.
I will second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be in touch next week. I'll get in touch with Mike, we can get that together pretty quickly, so, are you around next week? Give me more time.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Always nice when we wrap one up after it's been a little while, so... Alright, next up, informational and pre-application reviews.
There wasn't anything.
Yeah, okay, there's nothing. I'm just reading the list. No unfinished business. Other business from members of the board and planning staff. Updates from planning staff.
Alright, let me get, get my piles sorted out here. So... A pile of updates. I'm going to go through this little, try to be fairly quick here, where is my list? I just thought I, it would be worth informing the board, because I knew we didn't have a lot of applications on the agenda here tonight, that to just give you some updates about applications, so, you know, since I started in January, and sort of still working on sorting up, sorting out things in the office, trying to understand, you know, we go through, conditionally approving something like this, you know, months can go by, and then I come in, and it's like, well, what happened to the site? So, um, I want to thank Juliet Harvey Bolia, who's here in the back, for doing a whole bunch of research, digging into, um, the last couple of years, really, of what the planning board has approved and conditionally approved, and we've gone and, she's gone and visited some sites, I've taken a look at them, and a variety of different things, um, to just sort of see what's, what's been going on. So our quick report on that is, um, from, I guess, starting back in 2019, and I, without going too far into the details about what month you approved, but there was, um, for the Pemmy Fuel site out on 3A, uh, that looks like there was, it was for two large propane tanks, only one's been installed, I think there was a condition that said that you needed to get a revised plan, um, so we've been in touch to try to work on, um, getting those details finalized and pulled together, so we have the right accurate, uh, pieces in the file for that, and we will follow up as we can on that one. And I, you know, may need, there may be things that you guys know about some of these, these sites too, that we are, that, that, uh, you can help fill us in as, as you've traveled around town, too. In 2020, there was MW Realty, a sub-site plan review, this was on Tenny Mountain Highway, next to Granite State Glass, I believe this one is, so they did tear down a building, there was a site plan for a new, a new building to go in there, that has not happened yet. I mean, COVID has changed some people's plans to a certain degree, but they did do some work, and, you know, made some effort by tearing down the building, and we've been in, Jules has been in touch with them, um, and they are working with Plymouth Village Water and Sewer, because they ran into some issue with the water connection, water or sewer connection, so they're, they're definitely planning and continuing with it, so it just hasn't happened yet, but they are in the process of figuring out some of, some of the utility details on that one. Sort of next door, Red Barn Holding, they had an addition, that's all been done, and up, and looks fine. So cross that one off the list. Harbor Homes, there was, for a pavilion, I think it was, area, an additional pavilion added in, they have a building permit, and they have the materials there, they have not built it yet, but they've kind of getting ready to do it, and again, some, some things changed there with COVID. I'm going to come back to one here, but, um, Peppercorn is in the works on trying to, still make their renovations, I don't believe they've opened yet, one section of the store there is open, but they're, they're working on it. Um, the Lucky Dog had intended, had a site plan approved for a second-story deck, rooftop area, and we've been in touch with them, and they decided to not proceed with that, so that year, their year of approval has expired, they're aware of it, and they decided they're not going to go ahead with it, at least at this time. I think they're making another investment nearby, so... And, um, so from sort of historic ones here, Mountain Village Charter School is a little bit more complex, because, uh, they're, this one, this one's a little bit harder to decipher what's happened with it, um, I've gone back and looked at the files, we've had it, very recently, as of today, some conversations with them, because I sent a letter saying, "Hey, look, a year's gone by, um, our site plan review regulations say you're, unless we see some active and substantial development, then that is not valid." And the reason why we have that, or any town really has that in the regulations, unless you, you know, make some adjustments in that conditions of approval about when, the timeline for construction, understanding the seasons, the timeline, you know, you can, you can extend that, um, but, you know, we can change the regulations at any ti, you know, within a period of time, so, and things can change around a site, that means that, you know, a year isn't a very long time, but that's what the regulations state, that that's what the approval's good for. So because nothing had really happened at the site, although they did, within the last week or so, do, they did get an intent to cut in, I think, April, March or April, and then they have started harvesting, you know, forest harvesting in there, and they did get a driveway permit, but there hasn't been any other, um, effort made there, so... And in addition, as I started looking at the plan, and what I see in the records is very conceptual, there really isn't any grading details, no erosion control plan, and I understand they're trying to do this in some phases, but, you know, the, the planning board, the town, has a responsibility to really make sure, as we just did, you know, make sure all the details, the engineering, the drainage, utilities are all there, and so what was, um, you guys worked on before, and again, I wasn't here, but, um, it, it, it was pretty minimal in what's there, so they are, I've talked to two people today, this afternoon, from the school, and I think the best solution, there may have been somebody coming tonight to talk about it, but they, the best solution is just to have another meeting that I can have with them, go over really what their, what their timeline is, what their plans are, um, and see what kinds of details, I, um, it looks like I may have gotten an email this evening about, um, what was submitted, so I don't, I need to look at that, I just haven't had a chance to dig into it, so, that one's still sort of, um, out there, but I do feel, I personally, from what I see in the files now, think that they should come back in with a more complete plan, because it is a floodplain area, there's some wetlands around the site, you know, we would want to have the level of detail you've been seeing in the last couple of applications here, I think, for that, going from such an undeveloped site to a 10,000-square-foot building, and parking lot, well, septic, drainage, you know, floodplain, um, variety of things there. So we'll, we'll keep you posted on that.
Since we're talking about that, is this, I mean, I, I think we've got a representative from this project here, that it, since it's fresh in our minds, if there's, um, if there's something that this person wants to say, then if that's okay with everyone?
Is it okay with everyone? How's everyone doing?
Good.
Frank McLean, now board president, over there at Mountain Village. Yeah, so I was speaking with June, I got the letter through our administrator, and it was a bit of a surprise, um, you know, I didn't realize... was a bit of a surprise. You know, I didn't realize there was the one year. It's not on the application anywhere that it expires within one year and, you know, just didn't know. And then I had actually spoken on another matter. I was just chatting with Juliet on the phone and then that came up and that wasn't mentioned, the extension of 30 days that we had that, you know, opportunity. But I guess that the, one of the things that I just was trying to figure out is why it was canceled. And there's really no real definitive definition of what's considered substantial. You know, when you look at the definitions that it refers to, it says development, that's any change to the improved or unimproved real estate, you know, grading or filling or even storage of materials on site. We had applied for the intent to make a very substantial change to the property. If anyone's driven by, has, has anyone seen the site on Tenny Mountain or even noticed it?
Good. It's, it's-
There's a lot more sky in there.
It's definitely substantial. So just one of the things that we had was, you know, like with anything, like she was saying, COVID, there was time period where the forester was unable to get in there, you know, making sure that the land didn't get trashed by running through in mud season and then other things, whatever happens in business. But I don't think it should have been declined.
So there's no decline, just that, the, I guess, I can see what you're saying is the definition of substantial is, is what you're questioning here. And I think this is going to take a conversation, maybe more specifically with June, you know, at a meeting. I don't know if that's something that we can necessarily determine here. But, I don't know. Does anyone else have any?
When was it approved?
April 16th, 20. Just as COVID came rolling into play?
Yeah. I, you know, I would, if you're looking for feedback on what the board, some of the board members might think, given that we were all kind of just stationary in our homes and you couldn't even get people to do anything, I would, I would think that we would want to extend it for another year till April of 2022. It just seems like that. They, they went through the hoops. They got their approval. And-
So if I'm remembering this correctly, it seems like it was longer than a year ago or a year. And it seems like it was like four years ago.
It was a long year.
So, but it seems like there were more details that still needed to be worked out pending funding and things like that. So we were given a pretty bare bones plan. And I, I don't think that the record is reflecting this, but my recollection of this project was that there was some, some detail that we were going to need later on. So once we knew buildings, that we'd need erosion and, and erosion control plan and the level of detail that we, we expect and what our site plan regulations outline that we expect. So I'm wondering if we can work something out here. So if we're going to, if we can extend the deadline here, can we also put in something that is requiring the applicant to put together more substantial plans? So we know what's, what's getting put on that. I, I'm, yeah, I'm not sure. Can we do that? Should we do that? I don't know.
Right. I, I seem to recall that, you know, we had approved a plan that showed kind of temporary buildings, but that we would have a revision when we had permanent buildings at the time. And, you know, it didn't really make sense to, that was my recollection, correct me if I'm wrong. It seemed like that, you know, I think there was enough rough grading there to get some temporary buildings in because I, I think you had them out against the property lines. I remember there wasn't a butter who was concerned that the temporary buildings would be against the property line and that they were concerned about the visual impact, but that was going to leave you room to have those temporary structures there while you worked on the main building, which would be set in further. So, I mean, it's, I, I do recall some of the conversation.
Yep.
But I, I do think it was a tentative plan and that we were going to have to revisit it once you had a plan for the final building.
For sure. There were four bullet points that were like part of the, you know, but those were contingencies on erecting the building. So the, you guys accepted the plan as presented and then those four contingencies were in there. It was the 15 feet buffer between the property owner and then the design, because we were doing a design build based off of budgeting in order to have a more competitive bid process with builders, you know, like this is our budget, this is our needs, be creative, make as much money as you can, but also come in at this budget. So, I mean, one of the things, like for me, it's, and I was talking with the other board members, was, you know, when we came in, like we knew that once we had the, the, the real hangup that we had or that the planning board had was the design of the building. That was it. Everything else was addressed with Horizons Engineering. We had four pages with elevations showing where the, you know, floodplain was, drawn out, erosion control issues, you know, there was, that was all included in that. And there really wasn't anything other than the design of the building. But, you know, returning to just the building permitting process, the substantial development, once you have across that substantial development, is there a time period for develop, like to finish the building? I don't see that anywhere in the zoning or anywhere in the planning guidelines. Is that once you cross that threshold of substantial development, is there a expiration? Because I can't find that anywhere.
Right.
There's a statement that says, which is another issue of, another property I want to bring up, that you have to, once it's built, it has to be built and maintained according to the approved plan. There's a very clear statement in the site plan review regulations about that. So, yeah, this is usually where the board should be asking sort of the, for the timeline. So you can kind of work out milestones and understand like how long things should be taking to get done. And, and there can be times of come back and ask for extension because this or that happened, that sort of process. And I, I think what happened is that it didn't happen, you know, the, and so I'm, I think we need to look at this a little bit more detail. The plans that I see in the file, but I'm a little concerned that there might be additional materials that haven't made it to the file for some reason.
You're in the Google Drive. I don't mean to interrupt, but there, I saw them on the planning board Google Drive.
So it sounds like what we need right now is to just regroup, assess what information we have. And that might be something that happens with town staff and the applicant. And then-
But then I do think because we have this in the regulation, I mean, the, also the board can waive the regulations. So if the applicant wants to write a letter at some point, once we get this sort of sorted out, saying, here's where we are, here's what we're planning to do, here, we need an extension until this sort of timeline, that would go a long way. Even though you didn't get that letter within 30 days before that expires, you know, you can work with them in this case. Again, I, I do feel that there's probably, you know, there's no record of any construction inspection, that kind of thing being done too. There was no plan review that I see any record, you know, by our, you know, but it was done, if it was done by an engineer who's licensed, that's better than not. And it's a, it's a, it's an interesting site because of the nature of the floodplain and the air, you know, the highway and everything else. So I, but that was the decision at the time. I wasn't here, you know, so we kind of, I recognize maybe I'm doing things a little differently and helping the board get a little bit more protection for the community too. But-
So if-
Can we keep digging?
June will keep digging and if June and the applicant can connect and find a time to meet and talk through this and then, and then we can entertain a letter asking for an extension or a waiver from the one year.
Yeah. Yeah. That's, we can do that. But I think that we've already met those requirements with the improvement on the lots. And that's, that's where I want to just get a little bit of clarification on, once we have crossed that threshold, right, of clearing or making this undefined statement of active and substantial building or development, right? When we, when we've crossed this threshold, like are we not, is there a, like there was nothing attached to the original approval for building? And we were kind, I mean, going through with the zoning board and you guys, like we delivered that message for sure. So what has happened is, you know, we come in with our budget and we had X as the expectation of what we were spending on site prep and, and planning and design. And then now it's going to be up at Z, which we haven't budgeted for. So in order to meet that requirement of proposed, you know, more financial burden, we're going to have to talk about programming. So I mean-
I think, I, so I think what really needs to happen is June needs a little time with the existing plans and take some time to talk through that with her. And then we can, we can talk again as a board, but I, I just don't think we're going to be able to move much further forward this evening. So.
I just think, could we get also get a list of what you have done since it's been approved? I'm not familiar. I wasn't part of the board at that point. So I'm just not familiar with what's actually taking place.
And the timeline for the next steps of what, you know, the rest of this construction season, what you're going to, I mean, I think if you're thinking about starting drafting a letter asking for an extension, we'd want to know what's been done. I mean, because as, I mean, technically it expired in April of 2021 and there was nothing done yet. I mean, all the cutting just happened in the last week or 10 days or so. So let me just, but substantial development usually implies, you know, materials and, you know, being moved around, equipment, you know, effort, investment being made. And the, the clearing is, you know, related to the development, but it wasn't, it usually isn't really part of, you know, the planning board can't say yes or no to harvesting forest. So there's another piece to that, that that kind of work is a little bit outside of that. So, but if you can say this is what you've done and here's how you're planning to move ahead to get the site, the work that you're intended to do in the approved site plan without the buildings, because it was clear you need to come back for that, give us that timeline. When we talked today, it was still, I wouldn't, you know, what, what's the next step? Is it in, in August, you're planning to bring in excavators and bulldozers and move dirt around and, you know, make sure that there's the right erosion control stuff there and all of that? That would, that would help us to understand what kind of progress you're intending to make in being willing to grant that, that timeline extension.
Yeah. I, so we, yeah, we had that good conversation. I just, I guess I'm still not getting the point of clarification that I need, which is, is there a time period of expiration attached to the original building permit?
It wasn't a building permit, but the site plan approval-
Site plan approval.
Is 12 months. Well, that's, I mean, we can, so this is, we did discuss this earlier, but there is no like real definitive answer that I can find on expiration and-
Well, I think there's also, it's hard for us as a board to, in setting these regulations to say, okay, all, all site plans, once they're started, they have to be done within a year because projects vary so widely. I think that, you know, so I think you're not going to get this point of clarification that you need. I think this, this, and Mike, I know you wanted to say something. So just give me one second. I want to just make it clear that we, we want to work with you on this. We're not trying to put up a wall and stop you. We want to work through this and we're dealing with a, you know, our, basically our staff coordinator change in the past six months, you know, the pandemic and adjusting when you got your approval to, you know, that was our first meeting on Zoom. We're figuring things out as well and trying to make sure we have everything lined up appropriately so we can make sure that we're giving you the best answer that we can. And I think it's just going to take a little bit more time. And I think we're going to be able to work this out, but we just need to go, take it one step at a time. So.
I'm happy to try to navigate that. I just, yeah. When do we want to schedule a time?
I'll let you guys coordinate maybe at a different time, but Mike, you had your hand up a while.
Yeah. So there was a very interesting subdivision that was approved prior to me being on the planning board. And we dealt with that every couple of years. It kept coming back because the approval for Blacky Brothers, I believe, I don't know if that sounds familiar. It got their approval and there was a downturn in the economy and the planning board was extremely sympathetic to that development and continued to extend it and extend it and extend it and extend it. And that question of substantial, and it, somehow the planning board felt that there was this substantialness. And if I were to answer the question, which I'm not the person to answer the question, probably there was no time limit. I don't think there is. But they kept it going for many years. And now we see the uptick in, in real estate and those house lots are selling now. That was, must have been approved 12 years ago. So.
So our zoning ordinance does define substantial improvement, but I'm not sure if that's what language we used in our condition of approval.
So this is what, I'm just going to point out this, do a quick screen share. Sorry.
Go ahead.
I pulled up the site plan review regulations and this is chapter seven, part B, approved site plan shall lapse if active and substantial building or development has not begun within one year from the date of the site plan was approved by the planning board or if specific conditions of approval have not been met within one year from the date of approval. So sometimes when you have conditions of approval, like you have to set up the escrow account, you know, those kinds of conditions that have to happen before construction starts. So that's what the regulations, that's what I'm going by. So that's where it is right there.
Because you've just started reviewing this, I guess, recently, you don't have the specific, you know, conditions of approval for this plan?
We have the notice of decision from that, you know, in the file. So.
But you don't have, you don't have that somewhere you can pull up so we can see what those conditions of approval were?
Uh, I don't have it easily.
So.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So I could tell you what they were.
But specific language and specific wording sometimes matters. And so, I mean-
It's right here. It says there's two conditions, that the applicant maintain the vegetative buffer tree line to the east of Lee Butter and that the applicant return to the board and present plans showing the permanent building and pedestrian circulation.
Okay. So based on this, specific conditions of approval have not been met because he didn't return to the board and show us building plans within a year?
Yeah. And that, but there's really nothing had happened on the site.
Right. But the, but if the question was, is there a threshold or is there some point at which it passes? Well, the language here is clear that he didn't return and show us a building plan and thus it's passed. Which you still could apply and get an exception and all of that, but I don't, I don't think your question about a threshold, I, it doesn't, I don't think it matters because the, it doesn't hinge on the first part of this clause, but on the second.
So if you're just reading that and you don't read the minutes, you'll see that in the minutes, it's all addressed with, that's part of the build design process. The pedestrian circulation in the building is not going to happen until the build design was going to be completed. And that's all contingent on funding. So the issue at hand is actually just, and we can chat about it. I don't want to take the whole board, but it is the building permit expiration and why it was, or the building-
Site plan review.
Site plan review, you know, being labeled as expired.
Like I said, I think, I, I don't think we need to keep going around doing this evening. I think we need a little more time and, you know, we're here to work with you and, and I mean, I guess that's all I can say right now unless, like-
Yeah. I would agree that we're here to work with you. We understand. I think there's not a board in America that is not sympathetic to anybody that got their approval just before we all shut down. And I don't think there's one person, and I can't speak for anybody, but I know for myself.
It's just after.
I think it's just a matter of coming in, to me, it's a matter of coming in with asking for another year for your existing approval. And to sit here and say, well, now we want more things, more information. This, I, I think that's, might be a step too far for a board to ask, but that's again, just me. So I think coming back, asking for an extension might be a nice way to go. And that's the board that would be the ultimate people to weigh in on that, not.
Why don't we just find a time to have a meeting and, and kind of get into this a little bit more?
Any other questions for me while I'm here in your areas? Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Frank.
I'll give you a call tomorrow.
Or next week would be, but yeah. Okay. So moving on to the next bullet in here, B?
Well, I had more things.
Oh, there's more. Okay. Sorry. Sorry. We're still in A. Please continue.
I will try to go-
We, we did hijack your conversation.
Yep. So more recently, I did speak to the select board on, just this past Monday night about updates on Riverside Landing because the select board had asked what was going on with the conservation easements and all. So it's, I think I talked about this not too long ago. I've got sort of a timeline. Long and the short of it is we're still, the Riverside Landing, and I have talked to their applicant representative, Mike McGinley, several times about other matters. But, you know, he's still waiting for the alteration of terrain permit. That, the state actually asked for an extension, which is, he was not happy about, but Fish and Game needed a longer time period to review it. So right now DES asked, asked the applicant to extend their review time to July 30th. So we'll see at the end of the month. so we'll see at the end of the month where that goes. But then we still have these two conservation easements and there's still some language to be worked out within those. I have had, back in June, middle of June, about a month ago, June 18th, a phone call with the attorney for Riverside Landing, and then on June 24th, I also discussed it with Mike McGinley. So, they know they have to do this. There's still definitely some, some stuff to be done in terms of the conditions. I don't, I think back then, we didn't, there may be some, he may need to kind of write a letter and say, well, because of these things happen, I need more time on something, but we'll cross that bridge. And we, I'm very much in touch with them about it. And I think, once they get the alteration of terrain permit, we'll, we'll know more on that one.
And the easements, he probably doesn't want to finalize those until he knows he's got his, his AOT.
Exactly. I think, you know, his investment of some legal work until he gets the alteration, it's kind of like a chicken and the egg thing, which we didn't probably lay out clear enough in sort of a timeline when we did the approval because, and he should have had the alteration of terrain. I think they usually take 60 days, but they request sometimes a longer, Fish and Game wanted a longer time to review it or something, so, but. And then, Aroma Joe's, if you've been by on Tenny Mountain Highway, I didn't have a chance to go by this afternoon and I was planned to, but-
There's a porta potty there now.
Yeah.
There was a concrete crew on, concrete crew on site this morning.
Yeah, they were trying, yeah, they were trying to pour concrete, but it had been too wet the last few days, so. But Mike Vignelli has been out, I don't remember when he was last there, but he was, so the silt fence, you know, the erosion fences there, things like that. One thing I, I thought of, unfortunately, that's a really tight site for everybody to go to, but since it's underway, if we wanted to do a site visit while it was in construction, when they were working on, I don't know exactly when that would happen, when these detention ponds are being built, so you can sort of see them, but we can try to arrange that if, it's just, it's kind of, it's a hard site to have everybody pull in and park and maneuver around, especially at 5 o'clock or so with a lot of the traffic coming off Boulder Point. So, it might not be the best site, but at some point, I thought it might be good to take a, during construction field trip, because you see the stuff on paper and, but if somebody really is curious, we can arrange to go out there during the day with just me or with Mike or something.
There wasn't a butter who had said he was considering building a bridge so his tenants could get there.
That's still been under construct, under conversation, yeah.
My point is, we could, we could ask him if he would mind if we parked in his parking lot and then could simply jump the creek.
So, we, we can think about, I don't know how, I can check and see what their schedule might be, because it's kind of, it's interesting to see something go from paper to, to real life.
Do we get credit for it?
Extra.
The merits if you don't go.
No. And then-
College credits.
A Rome, point of view drive, I still haven't been able to solve, I don't really have an update for that, so that's still in a pile on my desk of some things, so, to be continued.
The drainage structure outfall. Was, did, did we reach out to the fire chief?
Um, I, you know, I did not do that yet, because I'm still trying to figure out the timeline of when things happened and when this hammerhead thing may have happened, may have changed. So, then they can have a better chance to, from the time point of view, look at emails and anything in their files. Sometimes the timeline's good.
You've got a lot of faith in people's email sorting.
Yeah, that's true. It's a thought. So, lastly, so the other couple of updates here, so code enforcement, you know, that is something we've been working on more. And again, on Monday night, Scott Whedon, the building inspector, code enforcement officer, emergency management director, he's got a lot of jobs, a lot of hats. He started in May, so it's really been a couple of months and we've made some good progress, I would say, on 30 High Street, the house that had the fire burned pretty substantially almost a year and a half ago, I think now. So, long story short, we've gone through a process of reaching out, following all proper procedures to notify the owner and starting originally as sort of a zoning violation, because there's a limit of how long you can leave an abandoned building, basically. But we've determined that it's, it's enough of a hazard and enough problems, I mean, the thing is really starting to kind of cave in, that it should, there's another statute, and I don't remember statutes very well, but where towns can go in under, it's kind of a dilapidated building statute and go through another channel, again, we have to notify the abutter, I mean, the owner. So, that's all been done. We have to file in court, so the motion for proceeding ahead has been approved by the judge, as, again, the timeline is buried in my computer, in my emails. So, the, and then there's a waiting period, or appeal period for the owner, so we're kind of in that timeline, but the goal is that the town will most likely be hiring a contractor to come in and tear down the remains and fill, collapse the foundation and fill it and loom and seed it, hopefully by the end of August. So, a lot of people have asked about it, so, and it is at the town's expense, we have to pay for that, plus the legal fees and there are, we've, I get all the proper notices at the registry of deeds, so then if a sale of the lot happens, that's when we, we have a lien on it, basically, we would recoup the cost then. Or, and maybe some other ways, so, but it's worth, the town needs to do it, you know, this is-
I'm familiar with the process from a previous town. It was very much as you described, you know, knock it down and assess the fees as a lien against the property and they get figured out when it sells.
It's unfortunate, but it, it gets costly, but the town manager decided that was the way to go and that's-
The homeowner has the right, has the ability to do it themselves if they don't, if they want to keep the property and, you know, they need to exercise that.
Too much time's gone on, you know, it's, it's at a point where it's really, if you go walk by it, it's kind of dangerous looking at this point, too. So, and then also, Scott's been working with George Kirk on Tenny Mountain Highway, the two properties he has there, and, and has had some good meetings and conversations and has been on site and walked around with, one of the first goals is to really try to get the site opened up so at least we could get fire life safety equipment around the buildings. And so, that's happened. He has removed some material, again, Scott's been really been handling it, I haven't been out there doing it, but, and then I guess there's been several tractor trailer loads of scrap metal from around the buildings also removed from the site, as well as a number of vehicles. A lot of it, you can't see yet of the improvement because it's out back, because that's kind of where some of the space needed to be opened up. Back when the last site plan approval that he had, there was some needing to fill an area for more parking and that, so he has finally done that, filled in some, so Scott's continuing to meet with him periodically to, and having milestones, hopefully to have continued improvement on that site. So, that's been a cooperative endeavor so far, which is good, not having to go to more formal violation notice kind of approach, but we have been watching it closely and moving on that. So, I thank Scott a lot for what he's done on that. So, it still doesn't, you know, look that different from Tenny Mountain Highway from, but it's, it, if you really do look, there is more of a circulation path, at least around it, so that's, that's kind of first and foremost, the thing to get done and getting some cooperation, which is nice. And then one more, I have one more screen, well, I want to move on to the screen share. The other thing that's emerged, partly because of activity on Boulder Point Drive, the dentist's office, as you go up on, just after Walmart on the right side, the board approved, and I don't have the timeline here, a site plan some time ago, and there's been parking outs, there's a driveway in and a parking lot, and then there's an area of gravel that's part of the parcel, but they've started, there's been parking there, I'm not quite sure, I'm assuming it's from that office. It's starting to break up the shoulder, the edge of the pavement of Boulder Point. The town is looking this summer or fall to repave Boulder Point, so it's damaging the pavement and if we put fresh pavement down, but beyond that, it's also, cars are either, you know, pulling in, backing out onto Boulder Point, there's enough traffic there that it's just become what we call a curb cut that's far extended beyond what was on the site plan. So, I, I wrote them a letter and said, found the statement in the site plan review, you have to maintain it according to the approved plan, and so please stop parking there. So, hopefully we'll gain some, they have continued, not as much, but we have been keeping an eye on it. So, we might put up some no parking signs. There's actually a conservation easement on the drainage that comes down through there, so I think their parking is actually extending into that area. I haven't really figured out exactly the limits of that, but that would be another problem if they are-
The town holds that easement, right?
Yes, it was part of the Walmart development, so, we're keeping an eye on that one. Again, that seems, in the scope of things, it seems kind of maybe a little nitpicky, but it's, it is a hazard for the way cars are having to pull in and out of there onto Boulder Point Road and it's starting to damage the pavement, so when we put the new pavement down, we want to maintain the town's investment in it. So, that's one reason why we have designated driveways, so, working on that one.
It's really helpful to hear where we are with site plan reviews that we've approved and just other issues, because I think it just helps us think about the importance of what we're doing in the site plan review process.
Yeah, I agree.
And sometimes things, you know, I mean, different owners or different things can happen, they don't, you know, they want, maybe not realize they shouldn't be parking there, but, you know, there's first and foremost, the safety and then the town's investment, that's kind of job to maintain, keeping, keeping things the way they're supposed to be, so. I don't know. I have a picture of it if you can see.
Great.
Yeah, that's site plan, I don't remember when they, in 2013 was the dentist's site plan, so that goes way back.
It was before I was on the board. It was about you.
All right, that's my updates. Any questions? I got one more thing, the applications.
The revised subdivision applications?
Yeah. I'm going to do yet another screen share. One thing that we have been working on, Jules and Scott and Carol actually from assessing has been helping us, oh, sorry, let me find the right. Find the right screen to share here. There he is. Our, and for some reason, the town seal isn't showing up here. What we're trying to do is rework our subdivision and site plan review application, they are going to look kind of similar, so I just have this one up here now. Imagine the town seal here, I don't know why that didn't come into the PDF, but we wanted to make a fillable form, because we're getting a lot of people that nowadays, the narrative, it's like, see attached, and, you know, it's just a lot of extra paper. Our application form was actually fairly lengthy, we don't have a lot of file storage. So, we basically are just trying to clean it up and present it maybe a little bit more simply, again, name and address, those kinds of thing, a place where somebody could type in the description of their project here, some site information, this is for subdivision, like how many lots are you going to be after the sub, you know, any new roads, that kind of thing. And this is, you know, we can edit this after we, if, once we are ready to adopt it, kind of trying to be a little bit more direct about the submission requirements and then signatures, so there's, you know, people have to either designate that they want an applicant to act on their behalf, they have to give permission, and this is on the existing form, but it's more clearly, it's a little bit better spacing, so they can have, hopefully see it a little bit more. I'm thinking maybe we should say, you know, unless otherwise requested, things are good for one year. That might be something to add at the end. So, it's just kind of keeping the first two pages, just sort of the site information, signatures, blah, blah, what you need to do. So, there'll be more, and this is how it comes really as attachments, mailing labels, that sort of thing, rather than having pages of, that they say, see attached, just telling people to attach it in this more digital world we're in. And then the checklist, so we've always had this aspect of like applicant or waiver and it's confusing to people, so basically they would just check, you know, check each, each box and put an X on it if they've got it, and then trying to make a more simple statement saying, if you don't have this information, request a waiver, so there's more clarity for the board, so they know, so you can assess that completeness and we can make notes in the, on the staff side, too.
This is great.
So, yeah, so we're down to just four pages and I think I got room to say in here, it's good for one year, whatever.
I have to look up what A, W, and P means every time.
Yeah, me too. So, I figured check would be. We've actually put a lot of hours into this, believe it or not, so we're doing this with subdivision site plan, the zoning board application and the building permit application too. Scott's been really making some changes to that, again, make it much more clear, much more fillable. And then our goal is to have one sheet that's a fee schedule, it will have the prices for everything on there. And I don't have that up here. But anyway, so the idea being, and we are looking, we talked to the select board just introduced the other day about the idea of maybe raising fees a little bit, trying to make an assessment of what it, you know, fees hasn't, haven't been raised in some time, you know, the, the amount of time the staff spends and the cost of that, we'll never recoup it all, but I think it's time to bump it up a bit. I know that sometimes people say, well, now you're going to, you know, discourage development and I, I really don't think, you know, that's that true when somebody's making, you know, tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars of investment on a site to spend a few thousand on the, this work is important, so. But we'll, we aren't ready yet to present those new numbers and it really is approved by the select board, too, so we will be talking about that more.
Quick question.
Yeah.
So, that new fillable form, is that going to be keyed into a database or anything or is it still going to be individual documents?
The individual documents, yeah. We're not that sophisticated yet. Unless you want to help.
No. It would be convenient.
Yeah. Well, at the same time, we also organize things, we try to organize things by map and lot number, so we have files that, so we can look at, ideally, you can open up the file cabinet, and I want to start making that a digital file cabinet, too, by map and lot number, where you can see that the stuff that's happened even back to 1988 or something on a site or, you know, whatever. So, because their lot history of a site sometimes is really important, or other cases, you know, especially in town, we've had a lot of zoning issues on some properties more than others and the files can be, the zoning side, it can be quite lengthy and complicated. That was a, just a kind of an update about other things that we have been getting done besides reviewing plans and things, so.
That's, the applications forms are great. I think, I can see that saving, being a lot easier for us to read them and for applicants to be able to fill them out as well, so. That seems like that is long overdue, so, that's great.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Agenda for future work sessions. So, we have our July work session off. I hope you all enjoyed your, your evening two Thursdays ago. But coming up, Mike, you're still up for doing a summary of the work that agricultural, agricultural zone, I'm going to botch this, agricultural zone committee has done, so that'll be on the agenda for next time. And then it seems like through the work sessions, June's done a great job at kind of bringing us up to speed on the different processes that we're in charge of. And it seems like we've found some emerging needs in our zoning ordinance to fix and we should be probably spending our effort to address those before making any big substantial changes to the zoning. Is that kind of the consensus that we've all reached? So, I think that coming up, it's, I think some questions about the multifamily situation, there's a couple of other things. So, I think we just need a priority list and then thinking that we need to kind of wrap up what we need to do by December, so that gives us August, September, October, November, you know, four work sessions to-
June, do you have, is there, it seems like you were keeping notes or a list of definitions that need to be clarified, things like that, you know, like active and substantial. We do have it, we do have it, so the, it was interesting, the definition of substantial development is in our-
Zoning.
It's in our floodplain development ordinance, but that's what the zoning refers to, but, I mean, in that definition, it says, you know, 50% of the value of the, of the project has been completed, which-
Substantial is, means more than 50%.
But active and substantial can be different than substantial development, too, so it's, you know, I, I think if our site plan regulations say active and substantial, we should define that.
That's, I just made a note of it here, so I will, I have a long, a really scattered list of zoning issues that, we won't be able to even get through all of them, but I think some of the general provisions, definitions would be a really good place, that, the general provisions is where a lot of my time kind of lands in sort of sorting that out, but now, you know, we haven't had any real sign requests, but if we do, yeah. Parking hasn't been too much of an issue, I think we can usually work that out.
There's the whole issue with fences, too.
Yeah, fences, and that's in that general provisions is real conflicting as things that, but then, the other one that has just emerged is ADUs, the accessory dwelling units. The way that was dropped in, there is, just says you need a conditional use permit, so I know, I guess you've gone through a couple of them, but there's nothing that says, like, do we charge a fee for that? What's the, there's an application form that's basically name and address, and what do you want to do? Maybe a little sketch. Do we have to notify a butters? I don't, I don't know. I mean, so there's that kind of clarity that I think we should be adding, making a decision, do we want to go through that kind of a, I mean, to me, the butters should probably be notified, but then, then we need to charge the money for the butter fees and, you know, it takes some time, maybe at least a hundred dollar application fee or something, I don't know. We're trying to look at what other towns are doing to kind of clean up that process a bit.
Is there a specific process that we as board members should be going through to prepare for these work sessions to?
Yeah.
And a plan to like make that digestible and, you know, incremental or?
I will, I'm going to be trying to get, you know, the week before the meeting, information to you at some point. And then I guess that biggest, that would be the best starting place is to read it.
Would you like us to do some proofreading and forward any catches to you with suggestions?
We did talk about a committee for subdivision and site plan. I know Susan and Mike and John, Carl, I think you were interested. I actually kind of think the zoning might be more important. I don't want to push that off too far because I see problems in those regulations, but I think we can make those things work. They're, they're okay. Having the new form may help. It's not really changing the information, but just having more clarity. So I'd rather maybe have, even if you guys as a committee would be willing to shift to kind of look at zoning pieces too. And having, you know, at some point, it's like, okay, we can go this way, this way, or this way with it, how much, which, you know, maybe having a subgroup kind of help me and then I, then I can work more at some specific, you know, Juliette and I can work more at some specific texts that will help address that. Because you have to really, you know, amend the language of the ordinance. It's not just, hey, we want to do this, you know.
Right. I just also want to like, do we want to have like this week, we're going to be working like on our definitions? This week or maybe?
Ideally, yeah. And I need to kind of get more organized and, you know, I have to say, it's been a little, you know, still getting a bit settled and look down in there.
Yeah, it seems like...
I'll take a look in my office.
For zoning, definitions are kind of easy to, to adjust as far, I mean...
That's a good starting place, yeah.
You know, it's, those are, those are relatively easy to present. But when we're starting to try and reconcile some discrepancies, I think that's going to get a little more complicated.
I mean, if you really want to read the definitions and, you know, not late at night. But, you know, there's, there's areas you're like, like what is the definition that we just went through this one recently, a tourist home? Like what, it's so archaic. We ought to just like maybe get rid of that and adjust it. Maybe.
That's a bigger discussion that's going to take.
And then I have a list that I showed you some time ago of like things that are on our list of, just the list of permitted uses that we have no definition for. So, and other things that have come out like campgrounds, we don't really allow them. We can kind of call it a, but we probably need to adjust recreational use to include commercial, like the RV campground. You know, we kind of called it that, but the definition could be updated because the recreational implies more like town recreational fields, you know. So those sort of things, just read through, I mean, again, it's not exciting reading. A lot of them are like, yeah, it doesn't really matter. But there's some areas, especially archaic ones, like what is this, how would you really interpret this if you sort of hop in?
And just a heads up that there is an entire definition dictionary that is really helpful too in seeing what, I mean, they're kind of examples of what other municipalities around the country have used to define certain things, so.
There's also state statutes on some of the things like campgrounds and stuff like that.
Somewhat, yeah. And some, we may or may not want that. And then, you know, the other thing is just Google whatever your favorite three towns are and see what their zoning ordinance, a lot of, you know, you get, get three or four different examples and figure out what, amend it to, to work for us. So, so, so yeah, I can, so I think some of the priorities are those, the easy place to start is the definitions and then the general provisions. Not, that's not so easy, but those are the kind of key areas. But, so we said, so the next couple of work sessions are, I was looking at my, my email here, somewhat organized, are August 5th, September 2nd, and October 7th. I did reach out to, is it Lakes Region Community Developers about, because I had met with them about housing in Plymouth and possibly they're interested in talking, they wanted to talk, you know, about what, what is, what's going on for housing and how can they, they do housing development. I believe they're a nonprofit, but they said they always pay taxes. We'll see what that really means and, but it's Carmen Lorenz that was interested or very willing to come to the board to talk about this issue of housing in the state of New Hampshire. It's been a lot of stuff in the news and we are seeing it, feeling it, hearing about it here in Plymouth. So I think this ties to the zoning ordinance rewrite because we have that restriction of no more than six units per building. Is that something we'd want to by special exception perhaps in some zones perhaps allow for some different types of housing to, if somebody wanted to make an investment, can we, is there a way we can do that? I think that's a big, could be a change, but there's probably some good reasons for it because the market's somewhat changing to want to have some smaller units. And, you know, we're also working with water and sewer, like does it make sense to keep extending things out into the hinterland or should we find some infill areas that are closer where there are the services available? We're getting some indication, I've got another conversation, I think next week with, next week or two, the third conversation about some larger, I'm guessing, housing developments people are asking about. So not always sure where, you know, they just want to talk. So I think that hearing from this group is a good starting point to hear about both, like what they see as the need because they are based in the Lakes Region, I think the Laconia. And then I also suggested if they could come with the Hampshire Housing Authority, or no, Hampshire Housing, I guess they are now, sorry, New Hampshire Housing.
Hampshire Housing Finance?
It used to be Finance Authority, Dunham, yeah. So maybe get Ben Frost as their policy person. He's fantastic. Just, he can zoom in, you know, from, and...
He's presented at numerous, you know, planning and zoning conferences and I don't think I've learned any, learned as much from anyone more than him.
So that's what I was also saying, rather than just hearing it from somebody on the maybe is a community-based developing kind of perspective, but Ben can give a little bit different sort of viewpoint. And he's, he's been in New Hampshire a long, long time, knows New Plymouth. And he is, he's a wonderful resource, so. So I did reach out to, we had a, you know, email follow-up to the conversation. So I was suggesting maybe in September, October, we have a, have them as sort of to talk about housing and then maybe for 30 minutes and then we can also dig into definitions and other parts too. So kind of focusing that stuff on the, but on August 5th, we want to talk about the agricultural?
Sure.
Okay. And then I'll pick one of these dates for the housing and then other stuff. Thanks. That helps to kind of set up like, what are we going to do?
If we did put this subcommittee that we established together, how do we communicate? Does it just go through you or can, if it's, it's not talking about an applicant, it's more governmental, we still can't have more than four people on the email, correct?
It shouldn't be, yeah. I mean, you know, communications to set up meetings and things, that's fine, you know, it's more, we're not talking decision and policy.
But we can't do this stuff through email, a lot of feedback.
Yeah.
Is this a committee that's been appointed by a board, a town board?
No.
And it's not subject to rights?
It'll be what Rebecca picked for the committee.
But it is for planning board members.
So, yeah.
Then it kind of becomes a meeting.
Yeah, if it's for, if it's a quorum of planning board members, then it does need to be...
Noticed enough, yeah.
Yeah, noticed.
So we can't communicate email with, but...
You could, you could reduce the number of planning board members to less than a quorum.
Yeah. I mean, again, when there's business being done, it's always no harm in post, you know, I, I think when we, or me, yeah, hey, can you meet on Tuesday at 10:00? You know, that's a different communication than sort of setting up a timeline.
I'm thinking we can actually work through some...
Yeah. And I can send, here's some information to look at before your meeting, you know, that kind of thing is fine. That's what, you know, that, you know, I, this is my town computer, anybody can look at anything you want on it. I don't, I got nothing to hide.
One caution as we start to get into this more is nailing down more definitions and being more specific. I'm wondering whether all these boards from the 19, I don't know when Frank was, put together the zoning, maybe we're left a little ambiguous on purpose to not put us into a box where it's black and white, yes, this is, you know, like the example with the charter school here, there was no hard and fast rule. So I'm wondering whether we do want to get a lot more specific about things or if there's a reason for that. And in making a lot of changes all at once. I know in 1994, I purchased a family farm and there was this old building built in 1773 and the family moved it in 1912 to where it was. And I thought, jeez, I know exactly what this thing needs. After owning it for about a year, I had dump trucks come in and put some filth because there was too much water and I raised up the driveway and everybody had nice dry parking. And then I started realizing, well, where's the water going? Yeah, it's going into the foundation. The people before me really didn't know what they were doing. And I made all these changes and it really was for nothing. And I made, I made it a lot worse. So there's probably some reasons why the people before us did things the way that they did. And maybe we need to look for the things that are just blatantly changed because of what year we're in. And maybe there's some changes that maybe are well left alone. So I just caution the committee that's going to be looking at that.
And I, I hear you on that. What I'm, my goal is really to kind of find, there's, there's places where one page says one thing and some place it's, you know...
Right.
That's the kind of stuff of like, you know, or what is a tourist home or whatever these definitions, you know?
And I would like to know what that is because this town has its history in tourism. I mean, that was the, besides agriculture, tourism was the big, I mean, you look at the size of our, not senior son, the train station, we're a lot bigger than a lot of other communities and it was the tourism that came to Plymouth.
The gateway to the White Mountains.
Ski train.
Yeah. You look at Lincoln and Littleton's train station, they're all much smaller than Plymouth. We were the hub back then.
There's the whole hotel right down by the river, yeah.
Yeah.
So...
So tourists must have been a, I'm interested to see what their thinking was back then.
Anyway, I mean, but, you know, there are things that have changed too and new uses that have emerged and, you know, different types of housing and that kind of stuff.
So it might be more tweaking than...
Yeah, yeah. But I do think we, we should have some review of housing because there is such an economic pressure and, you know, there's needs for housing around. And we are, we are meeting with the landlords, the major off-campus landlords in the next week or two. Scott and myself, fire department, a few others. We decided, it's been, it took a little while to get a date, of course, but well, something that happened from our earlier conversation this spring with Interlakes Property, Jeff Theryan was just saying, hey, you know, what's going, there's been a lot of changes in the off-campus student rental market. We have a lot of businesses that are set up for that and they are feeling some changes. And I want, we want to make sure that they, we know what they're up against, what they're thinking about as they may be seeking different types of renters for their units too. I don't think there's any major changes along the way, but there's potential for some housing apartments, you know, in those places if...
There's already families moving into some of those.
Yeah, there have been some, right, yeah.
That discussion has come up, I'm concerned about that has come up amongst discussion of our school board as well. Because, you know, sometimes, you know, families, families moving into rental housing is a different impact than students and, you know, there's potential for, you know, cost of education in the community as well.
But we can't, you know, if it's permitted to have three apartments in it, it's got three, you know, we can't differentiate who it's rented to, that's the, so there may be some, but, you know, it's again, who wants to live?
I wasn't advocating that we should.
No, and I'm not saying that, but there, that may be a benefit too because in some cases, one family may just have two cars instead of four to five cars on a site on any given time. So who knows? May not need big dumpsters or other issues that have emerged in the neighborhood. So we're going to talk to them and, you know, get a chance to see what they have to say too.
That's great.
All right, enough more.
One other thing for work sessions coming up, I want to get back on schedule for updates from other boards. So we now have a conservation commission representative on the board, right, Mike? And, which is great, I'm glad, I was really glad to see that. It's been a little more than a year since we've had a member in common. So we'll just get updates from other people who are on town boards in our work sessions as well, so. Next up, the, it's just the most ridiculous...
I just copied it out of an email.
No, no, it's, no, it's just that they just keep changing that.
I couldn't really shorten it anymore.
It's no longer the New Hampshire Office of Strategic Initiatives.
Since July 1.
Which was formerly the Office of Energy and Planning.
Which was formerly the Office of State Planning.
Yeah.
Which is...
So they're back to splitting, they put energy in, now they've taken energy out. Right.
It just goes to show, sometimes you make decisions and you have to, you have to...
I don't understand why energy and planning were ever together anyway, but that's fine.
Somebody told me why one time, I don't know. But what's interesting though, with, I think what's most interesting about this is that the Office of Planning and Development is now under the Department of Business and Economic Affairs where it's always been under the governor's office. So it's almost like a, you know, in terms of the way that commissioners of the Business and Economic Affairs, that kind of thing. So it's a little different placement within our government system.
Right.
For both.
This stuff must drive their web people up the wall. All the, gee, just...
Not just web, I mean, they, offices, emails, everything. I've been communicating with people that were formerly at OEP or OSI that are now in Department of Energy and same, same thing.
Oh my gosh, yeah. All right. Just a long for the ride here.